Okay, Council, I'll call the meeting in order. I'd like everybody to rise to a moment's silence about this schedule. Okay, as required under Notice by Law 144, 2007, the public has advised the council's intention to adopt the following April 17, 2018 meeting. To adopt the 2000, excuse me, 2018 Solid Waste Uptillity Operating and Five-Year Capital Plan Budget, to adopt the 2018 Water and Sewer Uptillity Operating and Five-Year Capital Budget, intends to amend the tariff fees and charges by law to increase water and sewer rates by 5.5 percent effective January 2019, amend his 2018 capital budget to withdraw funds from City Hall reserves in the amount of $75,000 to offset the cost of City Hall interior renovations, to amend the 2018 capital budget to withdraw funds from the infrastructure planning reserve in the amount of $80,652 to offset the cost of wave finding signage, intends to amend his video surveillance policy CS1-3 to improve the best practices for managing the city's video surveillance program, to amend the election signs by law, to amend the municipal water supply and the provision of sanitary steward service by law pertaining to individual meters in buildings of four or more units, to amend the 2018 operating and capital budget to withdraw additional funds from the OCEF formula-based funding in the amount of $1,149,904.63 to offset the cost of the bridge rehabilitation work, and intends to implement a 4% municipal accommodation tax on all fixed accommodations in the city of Canora effective September 1, 2018. Declaration of許意 interest, anyone?
Yes. On, under operations and infrastructure, 3.1 multi-unit single-water meters, I'm going to declare a potential conflict of interest as I am interested in a unit there. And I'll do write down the paperwork for you, Heather, as soon as I find it.
Anyone else? Okay. Okay, confirmation of previous minutes.
The worship move by myself, second by Council Rousen, that the minutes from the last regular committee of the whole meeting held March 6th, and special committee of the whole meeting held March 20th, 2018, be confirmed as written and filed.
All in favor, Council? In case of any, motion is carried. Okay, deputations. Deb LaMaester is first, who are we calling?
Really close? Good morning, Mayor Dave, and councilors. I'm Deborah LaMaester. I'm the president of the Rotary Club of Canora and also the chair of the Splash Park Committee for the Rotary Splash Park Committee. I have with me several Rotarians. You probably recognize most of them, we've been here before, so I was hoping I wasn't coming back, but here I am. So our recommendation, I'll start off right from the beginning here, and our recommendation to City Council is a request for their support in servicing of the splash park site up to the estimated amount of $112,000 for the purpose of extending water and sewer services at Norman Park. Our reasoning is, the intention of our club is to celebrate Rotary's Centennial in Canora by giving back to the community that has supported us in so many ways. A splash park is planned to be constructed in Norman Park, and we have partnered with the city of Canora to accomplish this. Since July 2015, our Rotary Club has worked very hard and has raised approximately $275,000 with more donations coming in every day. Thanks to the generous support of our business community, local citizens, service clubs, and grants, Rotarians have volunteered over 2,000 hours of time to this project. Rotary has also partnered with the Northwestern Health Unit, Canora Association for Community Living, and the Lakewood Community Foundation to work towards our goal. We are confident that this will be, will receive, that we will receive a large grant that will give us the funding boost we need to inspire our prospective donors to reach our funding goal, which was $450,000. Our fundraising efforts will continue to meet our goal. Last month, we were informed by the City Water and Wastewater Division that servicing the splash park site to the originally planned location down in the beach area was not feasible as the water and sewer pipes running off Pearson Street were not large enough to meet the specifications for the splash pad and the wastewater. The wastewater would have had to be pumped up to the street level. This is a new development, not before mentioned as a possible barrier to locating the splash pad in the original proposed site. In consultation with city staff, the splash park is now going to be built on the old rink site between the two parking lots. So it'll be up on top behind Dairy Queen and kind of behind and to the west of the Kinsman Building. The water and sewer access will be off of Minnesota Street at an estimated cost of $112,000. This servicing extends water and sewer into Norman Park to make way for more development in that area. I, on behalf of our Splash Park Committee, am asking the city of Canora to fund the extension of services into the park for up to the total estimated cost of $112,000. The request for proposals will go out later this week, and by receiving approval for the city's support, we can be assured that the splash park will be built to meet the high expectations that have developed in Canora, especially in the imagination of our children. Do I have any questions?
Thanks, any questions, Council? Freebie. Thank you very much. Thank you for all the hard work. Okay, our next deputation is the Canora Rec Center ICE 20 presentation, and then what we're going to do, because on the agenda, it's the last thing on the agenda, so we'll just, we'll move it up and we'll do it at the same time as the presentation, right after the presentation, and that way you won't have to sit here for five hours through all the other items on the agenda. Go ahead.
So thanks for this. Just a few points of clarification to point out before we move forward with regards to the recommendation, that's before you today, that I want to pose some amendments to. The first amendment that I'd like to put forward is recommending the amendment to the third line, and it reads that in the event that the city of Canora is unsuccessful in receiving NOHFC funding, it authorizes staff to undertake the detailed design process in preparation of tender-ready drawings for the KRC expansion. So ultimately, that, after some second, third thoughts, that is actually a separate conversation entirely, that a report will have to come back to Council recommending an actual budget amendment, because that would be a budget amendment item that we'd have to deal with. So what ultimately we are prepared to do is staff will bring forward a budget amendment report to Council to reflect two-thirds funding for Council's consideration at the next committee of the whole. Okay, so that would be the first recommendation and the amendment of the recommendation. The second item I'd like to point out is the second last line, and it reads as followed. The Council approved the expenditure of $10,034.40 to be extracted from the Hockey Day in Canada Fund and be paid to StanTech Consulting for the preliminary drawings assembled in December of 2017 for options. Ultimately, that was an error that I'd like to point out, so City Treasury has identified another funding source within the budget under the, specifically the tile pool deck and the tile recreation center work and the floor deck work. Treasury has identified significant funds that we can utilize to pay off the $10,034, and a report, obviously with that detail, will be coming forward for Council's consideration. So any questions on the amendments or anything we're talking about there?
Mayor Dave?
Ms. Smith?
Can you just be clarified, you're a little confused about your first amendment.
Sure.
When you talk about we have to bring back another budget amendment, can you explain a little bit more and give me some numbers to describe what you're asking for there?
Okay, so the, the funding, so the dollar amount, $750,000, $250,000, the split of two-thirds.
Yeah.
That hasn't been allocated in this budget upcoming as approved, so for the year 18 into 19, that's not on the books, pardon my accounting, okay? So that's not on the books, so ultimately, if we move forward and approve resolution next to Council, we need to bring back a report modifying and amending the budget so that the funds are transparent on the books for the upcoming year. So that's kind of that split.
Yeah.
Ultimately, it's kind of like, it's a, an all-encompassing motion, ultimately, that was the intent, but what it needs to do is narrow in on the budget, because we, Council's approved the budget and we haven't put that on the books for this upcoming year.
Right.
So that's, yeah. Yeah, and I mean, it was lined in the higher-level, larger projects.
Anyone else? Carry on.
Okay, so ultimately, yeah, I mean, thanks for, thanks for this, and my presentation will be very brief. It could go on all day, so I don't want to take up all day, the entire day to discuss. Okay, no, it can't. So I'm gonna go over some of the considerations at a high level, and obviously, our consultants, Jeff Penner, principal for sports architecture for StanTech Consulting is here, and David Nelson, Nelson Architecture is here, and the third component of the presentation will go into a detail of both proposals put forward, that obviously you've read in the report, and including the recommendation in the further detail with regards to the half-bowl. So they'll cover that, take us through their architectural drawings and renderings, and then we'll continue and go through the considerations, of course. The one thing I'd want to point out with this proposal, which I pointed out to Council before and I just want to highlight again, is that this was staff-driven. This was an initiative that was picked up mid-2017 and pushed through with staff leading the charge. And obviously, as we know in the history of this proposal back in 2012 and moving on throughout the years, it was a committee formed and consultant-committee-driven, so we reviewed that, went back and took the charge from a staff perspective, so I just want to highlight that as well. And a lot of the information here, another highlight that I want to really reemphasize is that this is policy-driven. This information, a lot of it comes from Council-approved policy. So it fits the vision of the city, but it fits in that policy discusses the hardships of building a new piece of infrastructure, and it's always difficult, dollars and cents, but ultimately, at the end of the day, the community benefits. So all of this information has been pulled from it, and it speaks to the fact that the community will benefit at the end of the day, in the short and long term, as we move on. So those are my prefacing thoughts, and ultimately, what we have here moving forward is my overview of the background. We'll flip it over to the consultants to discuss the design concepts, we'll move through the considerations, we'll talk about, obviously, the endorsements that we have included in the report, which are all-encompassing, pretty exciting to read, and then we will talk about the recommendation again, obviously, the amended recommendation that we're suggesting to Council today, and then open it up for the Q and A portion. So quickly, with regards to the background, as we know, in 2012, City Council approved the establishment of the Recreation Center Committee, and obviously, it was staff, committee, and consultant-led to investigate the feasibility of an event center that would be linked to the KRC, all kind of underscored by the fact that it was, it was pillared with a secondary twinning ice surface. So that was there. So there were really two components to that proposal, $30 million-plus dollars was the price tag at the end of the day. And so this committee undertook significant stakeholder engagement with the public meetings that they hosted, online surveys to gather feedback, which were well received by the community, perceived benefits, APIs, indicators of the success of potential funding opportunities, all of that was put forward, and that was the mandate of the committee as a whole. And the committee met that mandate and presented to Council. It led to the development, again, of the comprehensive feasibility study and the design process from an engineering/architecture standpoint. The estimated, again, total cost was in at around $30 million, and Council did not approve that at the end of the day. So we go to 2017, when staff picked this up, and we split it into two concepts, and we looked at the event center and the twin. And ultimately, at the end of the day, we looked at the price tag and what the benefits were for the community, what our existing assets were in the community, and how we could move this proposal forward with the best intentions of the local taxpayer, the visitors, meeting our strategic plan, and checking off every box. Doing the responsible thing, we looked and we revisited, and we said, ultimately, the expansion of the rec center with the twin is the most responsible thing to do, because it could encompass a multi-use facility at the same time as providing extra ice surfaces, more ice time, and really fitting into the struggles and trials and tribulations that our user groups go through today, which obviously isn't included in the report. And as we move forward, we revisited with StanTech and Nelson Architecture, and they provided two new design concepts that we looked at in depth over many, many meetings, and obviously, the recommended half-bowl option is included in the recommendation. And with that background, I'll throw it over now to both David and Jeff to review some of the design concepts and renderings.
Great.
Thank you, Matt.
We're just gonna turn on the projector here. So as Matt mentioned, we've developed two schemes with the intent, with the intent of reducing capital costs. The challenge being to build a quality facility that's energy-efficient, that is also fully connected to the old arena, creating a true tournament environment. And we want to maintain the program, a lot of the programmatic elements that met the functional needs of the community, and we went through this, Jeff and I, I think it was about a year. Consultation, we listened to a lot of. And developed a facility that reflected that. Unfortunately, it was a very market. So the. And some of the characteristics and meeting of the user needs with a much-reduced capital budget. And so we've developed two schemes, one is a, a full bowl, which is really a, which is what you see on the screen there, and you can see, let's see if this works. And this is the proposed new facility, the twin. And you can see we've maximized the connection between the two, which is what I was referencing for a true tournament environment. We wanted that connectivity between the two. It allowed the change rooms to be shared very flexibly among the two ice surfaces. We've managed to maintain, we have eight change rooms, eight additional change rooms, making for 12. We have a very large exercise area, because that was really one of the program areas that was highlighted to us in the last couple of months. The, certainly, the current exercise area in the rec center was probably too small to begin with, because they filled it up, I think, after day one. So they're bursting at the seams. We had looked at a number of ways to reasonably expand that exercise room in the current facility, and there's not really a good cost-effective way to do it. So we proposed a new exercise area that is probably two to three times larger than what is there. High-level sports training, as well as community fitness training. So we think that gives us a lot of area. There's no magic to reducing capital cost, you just have to build less, and so that's been the exercise. How do we build less and still deliver some of the program needs that were identified? The major element that you probably recognize that's been. Very successful. I think Council felt that it was no longer necessary to duplicate it or have an additional facility of that sort. So that's actually gained us a lot of area and a lot of cost. That's, that was about 24,000 square feet. Other areas involved. So we found. I mean, whole schemes recognize that connectivity to show the next. There's the upper level, right, the seating area. So there's the full bowl and its horseshoe bowl. So it's still a very good-sized facility. Larger than the existing rink, its capacity is larger. Washrooms and concession. A very simplified program. What you won't see is any dedicated spectator boxes, I think, that we had identified last time, so there's no third level in this scheme, so we also reduced area in that manner. And we can go to maybe the earlier mention. So there's the, there's the new portion of the rink added on, there's the existing portion, and we've maintained the common lobby element to try and make sense of the circulation in what turns out to be a very large building. You know, we've got a building that can probably accommodate a significant portion of the Canora population, the local population, so it's really like, kind of building a little mini-city here. So the circulation is really important to make sure that people can find their way around and circulate easily, and also handle the high-traffic moments when a tournament or game ends, the exiting and things like that. So we have designated some cost to making sure the lobby works. Just over to the right, you can see the, you can see the pool over there. So just a couple of statistics on this one, the lower level on this proposal is 46,000 square feet, the upper's about 18,000 square, 4,000 square feet of building. The building cost is $14,936,000, that's the hard construction cost, and the total project cost with soft costs, landscaping and things like the parking area improvements, it ends up being $17,500,000 approximately. So that was still a little above what we thought, and certainly what staff thought would be acceptable. You can see that there's been about $13 million taken out of this proposal from the previous. We were encouraged to go a step further and do some cost reductions, still trying to maintain the quality of the facility and the nature of it from a programmatic basis. So if we go to the next one. So this is the half-bowl scheme, and you can see there's been a tremendous amount of area removed on this, because what we've done is we're only gonna provide seating. Maybe you can go to the other floor. You can see that, there's only seating on the one side, and that this is really open, much like Kuwait and Arena would be, where there's certainly walk-around space behind the boards, but there's no raked audience seating or anything like that. That's reduced the area down to a total of 51,900 square feet. So that's about 12,000 square feet reduction over the full bowl, and that leads to a cost, well, I should say, the seating area is, I think it was slightly modified than what you'll see in the report, it's a little more, it's about 617 in the seating area and about 94 standing room. So that makes it a little smaller than the current arena, and the key to the half-bowl is that we still get to maintain, we'll move that to the lower floor, all the change rooms and all the storage areas on this side. So those are key pieces, change rooms and community storage for user groups, and we still maintain a very large exercise and training area, they have their own change rooms here, we have a concession here, and of course, the lobby maintains, is the same between. On the change rooms, you can still use these change rooms for this ice surface, or these change rooms here for this ice surface, so it's a very flexible type of arrangement for a tournament situation. So if we go to the, just. So there's an overview, you can see it's very similar to the other proposal, it's just skinnier and less square footage. And I want to emphasize, as you're seeing right now, we're really developed to establish a, sort of an area in a financial envelope for the purposes of making a go/no-go decision. They aren't meant to be detailed design drawings right now, and we do expect to do, if Council decides to proceed, a lot of consultation with user groups, with Council, with staff, to accurately develop the areas that are, that are indicated here. So we just have a little walkthrough that I wanted to show you to give you a better idea of the space. This is kind of our hillbilly VR type of thing, so we're gonna walk you through. So here we are, walking along the front, and we're gonna walk through the front doors here. And that's the old building that you see in front of you, the seniors' room down below, those are the windows to the senior room. And we're gonna walk up the stairs, and so this is what the audience would, this is a path the audience would take. If you're a player, you would go down the stairs there and go to the change rooms, and here we just go up these stairs, and there would be. Uh, and here we just go up these stairs and there would be. So that's the upper lobby. That one door there is the elevator, there's the reception desk. This is a very rough model, so we're just trying to give you an idea of the space. So as you come into it, maybe we can go over to the corner, Scott. You can see the old arena on the left there. Just go in, look at the ice surface. So there we are, we've, we've put drink rails up because we know how important it is for people to stand at a hockey game in Kenora. Uh, there's the exit stairs, so you can stop there and look back. Nope, just look back. Then we can go across to that old exit stair there. Do a drone flight over the arena. And the windows you see on the second level there is the exercise area. Sorry, down below is the exercise area. Up above, we've actually put two multi-purpose spaces. And those could act as press, uh, areas for tournaments or, just hold it there. Um, press area for tournaments or, um, uh, boxes for tournaments as well, private boxes. So if you can go to the corner and then maybe look back over the rink there, Scott. So that's the rink there. So. Also noted, um, there are a number of opportunities here, um, to make an energy efficient building. Uh, arenas are kind of weird because it's the, um, the envelope is, is kind of different from other buildings. So you don't necessarily have a really efficient envelope. But I think the opportunities with arena are, are kind of heat recapture, um, which we fully intend on doing. There's a lot of heat created in the ice making process. So it's ideal if one can reuse that heat to heat the areas of the building that require it. We've got up, you can see we've drawn a fairly large flat roof here. Um, and we looked at, um, what would happen in, uh, one of the big costs of an arena, and certainly this one, is the electrical costs uh, over the year. And I think we're, Karen, you know, we're probably up in the three hundred thousand dollar range on electrical costs per year. But, but significant. Uh, and so we thought, if we're going to do anything, we should try and really offset those electrical costs. And one of the ways to do it would be putting a solar array on this beautiful big flat roof. We figured we could fit about four hundred and eighty solar panels on it, generating approximately a hundred and forty kilowatts of power. Now, in speaking with, um, Kenora Hydro, they thought the best way to deal with that is maybe not through the microfit or fit programs, but to do a, a, um. What's called a, a net metering scheme, where we basically turn the meters backwards. Uh, and we pay the net difference. Now, that's important because what you want to do is really size the solar array to the actual use. Because you don't want to produce more than what you're going to get credit for. Um, because they don't pay you for any excess that you use. It's just a net, um, a net to zero type of scheme. But there's a huge opportunity there, I think, in terms of. And minimizing operational costs over really the life cycle of the solar panels and a good twenty-five years into the building's life. Uh, we've also got some self-facing elevation, which would be ideal for a, a solar wall application where you're using the sun to just preheat the fresh air that you're serving the building. So I think there's a lot of opportunity there to make, um, to make that work. We haven't actually included those alternative energy costs in the city's report. We would like. It's expenditure for the city. So that's it. Um, I hope that gives you a good visual on what's being proposed. Stand to the facility so that you can carry that with you as you listen to, um, the rest of the presentation. Is there any questions I can answer on the building itself at this point?
Just for clarification on the green fund, there, there's two funds, there's the FCM green funds. There's also in the federal budget, two hundred and fifty million towards green projects. Only nineteen for infrastructure, rebuild roads and bridges for the whole province, but there's two hundred and fifty million towards green projects. So that would actually probably be accessible for the solar portion and any other portions that are going to be green.
And so I, I, I'll just say, uh, in the considerations, energy efficiencies, we outlined, um, our intent as administration to seek out, and we've already outlined the greenness fund, and I believe another one that would offset some capital costs substantially. So with the, with the intent that the drawings and the as-built plans will provide the overall detailed design and construction, uh, that will provide a very good pillar for us to apply with the intention of being an energy efficient building and making a solid case for capital funding for the project forward. So obviously, we've discussed the new design concepts. And the recommendation with the half bowl option, obviously, at fifteen point. And then we'll go into the considerations. So, um, in the report, we've highlighted in various sections, uh, user group, uh, statistics with regards to hours um, used over the last several years. And really kind of putting a magnifying glass on, on the difficulties that user groups are experiencing with regards to seeking ice time, um, seeking rental time. And one thing that I want to highlight is development of our athletes. Uh, they're very restricted in how they can develop and how we can accommodate them with our recreational amenities to develop. So the remainder, I mean, obviously, we're going to talk about these considerations, but that was one thing that I wanted to highlight. And that the ice usage at Thistle Arena that we have been noticing over the past seven years, it's been growing, um, which has obviously been highlighted there. And the disadvantaged user groups, uh, really, we've highlighted two in the report that I want to touch on, which is the girls' ice hockey and the Kenora skating club. And again, with regards to the difficulty in, in athletic development and player development, uh, we have some anecdotal evidence within that harsh portion of the report that speak to us actually having to turn away, um, some athletes and say, here's some time in actually Winnipeg that you can, that you can see because we don't have anything. I'd also like to highlight one key thing that's actually really shocking, um, that staff and consultants and, and everyone on board really understood, was that we have one public skating time per week. Uh, that public skating time is at Kuwait and Arena. And oftentimes, uh, we've had to cancel that if we're going to generate revenue and someone else needs some ice time. Uh, so we only are able to accommodate in our schedule one per week. And for those who have visited that ice time, um, for public skating, it's packed to the brim. So it's really hard to enjoy a public skate when it's, when you can't really skate. Uh, so that's something that was really shocking to us with regard to that. And the next consideration that we have is potential programming. Uh, so piggybacking on the difficulties, the potential programming identifies opportunities beyond the expanding ice time for the current user groups. So we move above and beyond and we look at what can we accommodate in addition to, um, the hockey user groups and everything else. And as David mentioned, part of this report is to highlight that this is a multi-use facility. So it can accommodate beyond the hockey, uh, sledge hockey, et cetera. It can accommodate, uh, events, which fits into our tourism destination brand. We want to accommodate additional events, which actually goes into, uh, Josh Nelson's realm. So we can bring in a few new concerts or what have you, trade shows, which we already do, but we're at capacity. So we explain in the report that we have to turn away, um, vendors because we don't have the space no longer. So we are at the brink. Uh, this will provide the additional supports to accompany and accommodate, um, interested parties as they want to rent space from us. Uh, and as it stands, I would say that staff are doing an exceptional job at meeting our age-friendly mandate. We have that age-friendly mandate in place and we note in the demographic data that we are aging, that the aging population wants these amenities, uh, and they will utilize them to the fullest extent as our data does provide. Our next consideration in terms of staffing requirements, uh, we, uh, we can refer to table three and four with regards to our maintenance operators and what is currently there and what obviously we'll, we will need to accommodate for with the expansion of this facility. I think it's, uh, it's really, the proof is in the pudding with regards to an expanded facility, we will need more staff. So as highlighted here, uh, one full-time and three part-time employees, um, as per current recreational staff standards. Um, that's what will really fit this expansion and we will be able to provide service excellence as per our mandate uh, to the public with an expanded facility. The next consideration, um, that staff thought was really important to discuss, uh, is the junior hockey, um, group that is interested. I mean, currently, we do have an ownership group that is still knocking at the door. Uh, our economic development officer fields phone calls probably once a month ever since this started with regards to what's happening. Um, and we just wanted to point out in the report in a few sections, some of the benefits of a junior hockey team that would, that it would bring to, uh, the region and the city as a whole. So obviously, I mean, the league, the Superior International Junior Hockey League, they have various teams around the region. The ownership group identified, as well as the league commissioner, that, um, there would be a significant ice time, um, in demand for the league, uh, for the team. And the hours are laid out in the table provided in the report. And supplementary space for storage, et cetera, which can be reached, as I've outlined to council previously, in an agreement as we move forward with this. Uh, information provided from the league indicates that two to three jobs would be created through the establishment of a team in Kenora. And, uh, data provided by a small community in Northern Ontario with a population of fifty-five hundred, um, this community has an economic, uh, impact projection as from the spin-off effect from the team of seven hundred and fifty thousand to a million per year. So we look at that economic impact, uh, from a smaller community. We look at the magni- we magnify it into Kenora and, uh, we can just see that, uh, there would be a significant economic spin-off effect uh, in Kenora from the junior hockey team. The next consideration that we look at, piggybacking from the economic impact of the junior team, is just economics in general. Kind of looking, we wanted to delve into, not voodoo economics, so to speak, I love that term, that's a David Nelson term. That I hear it all the time. Uh, but just like what, what the impacts would be, um, to the businesses, what the impacts would be to the community as a whole. And also really looking at the impacts of the user groups, um, from an economic perspective. We'll be able to host new tournaments. I've outlined in the report specifically, um, in the, um, the, uh, another section, actually, the North American, North, uh, First Nations Tournament that we just hosted. That First Nations Tournament is at capacity and we know that, uh, some of the organizers of that tournament have indicated that they can, they would love to come to Kenora and expand that tournament or expand, uh, other venues or events, but they are at capacity, we cannot do that. And also council will note that the moratorium that they did place on hosting new tournaments was put in place for this winter season because we were at capacity. So that's just, uh, something to note, um, for council. The report highlights modeling that was conducted using the Tourism Regional Economic Impact Model, so TRIM, if you recall on that report, um, provided from the Ministry of Tourism. And data from local user groups to estimate visitor spending on hockey tournament events. So that model, we modeled our economic impacts after. Uh, the expansion project will also present opportunity for potential complementary private sector development on site. So obviously, if investment occurs on this site, uh, staff and administration see, uh, a very positive spin-off effect of investment from the private sector in this particular area of the city. Uh, job creation impacts to be noted, both through the addition of a municipal staff complement as well, uh, that may be required through the addition of a junior hockey team. That should materialize over time. Accessibility of Ontario Disabilities Act is another consideration. So we looked at what we did at Kuwait and Memorial Arena. Um, yes, we, we invested significant amounts of money in Kuwait. However, through the AODA, uh, we'll have to, uh, invest in Kuwait Memorial Arena, uh, significant upgrades, approximately a million dollars. What, uh, council should note is that would be a key consideration in the future with regards to Kuwait. With the expansion of the rec facility, um, with the secondary ice surfaces, David noted, the intent was to really tie in what we have existing at Thistle and everything else and really tie in into the expansion so that we share dressing rooms, we share the lobby, we share that flow. But that would check off everything the AODA requires as well. So there's a significant accessibility lens to this expansion that should be noted. The numbers with regards to if there is no expansion, I mean, and bringing things up to par for AODA at Thistle, there will be a significant, uh, a significant number to be invested for the future council down the line. But looking at this investment of approximately a million dollars in Kuwait, knowing that we'll have a fully accessible facility with this expansion is something that council should really consider as we move forward, uh, as a really significant positive for the community. And the final, uh, second final consideration is demographics. So demographics, uh, obviously, there's, uh, quite a bit of data in there. The population of Kenora, as we know, has been stable. It's growing at a kind of, uh, a really minor rate over the next twenty-five years, but it is growing. And we do discuss, uh, the fastest growing demographic, as we know, is the First Nations indigenous populations of Canada. And there is a table in there that reflects Kenora's growth is definitely on trend with the rest of Canada that translates to First Nations groups. And we know that First Nation user groups utilize our facility, facilities significantly. And so we need to accommodate these additional, uh, users and user groups in our facility to keep up and on trend and provide that service delivery. Of course, um, our population projections, uh, four point five eight percent by twenty thirty-one. And the demographic data, again, reflecting with Canada, not First Nations, but just every, uh, population cohort is on trend with the growth, uh, that we see in Canada and other communities. I'll point back to NAFN as a tournament. So we have six hundred and forty participants and thirty-two team, thirty-two teams. Demand is there for more, as we know from organizers for this tournament. And if we couple that and link it in with the lens of the population growth in the cohorts that we discussed in terms of First Nations, millennials, boomers, we're on trend and we are actually, um, a community that could use this expansion as for multiple organizations that deal specifically with recreation facilities and capital expansion, as outlined in the report. The next consideration and the final consideration is the budget implications. The next step for this project is obviously as encompassed in the recommendation. To undertake a detailed process, design process with a preparation of tender-ready drawings at a cost of seven hundred and fifty thousand. Uh, NOHFC applications for sixty-six percent of this cost is recommended, of course. And the City of Kenora contribution for two hundred and fifty thousand is recommended to be debt financed through our prosperity fund. And then we'll link into the recommendation. So obviously, our third bullet point, um, that in the event that the City of Kenora is unsuccessful, um, that is recommended to be removed as it would be a separate report and recommendation to council. And the ten thousand thirty-four dollars and forty cents from the Hockey Day in Canada Fund. Uh, obviously, as I said, we have confirmed the treasury that there is another account to be, uh, extracted from, this is an error. Uh, and there's your recommendation and we can open it up to Q and A.
Okay, council, your turn.
Okay. Counsel, your turn. No questions? Great. How's Ray Miller?
I just want to acknowledge everybody that's here and acknowledge Francis Kavanaugh coming and resident city community. I've been, as many counselors around the table have been involved with this project for some time, talked about it for some time, and there's been good pros and cons that have come forward, back and forth. But I want to thank staff for a very thorough report. I'm satisfied with the amendments, the content, the information. You've done a good job of consolidating the information the report addresses and summarizes reviews to date as well as response to questions posed. The recommendation is to proceed and I continue to support that direction. I think, Matt, you talked about, in its preface throughout the report, is there's a great opportunity for partnerships with this facility. And I think that's one way that we can make it go and we can pursue that. And to me, it supports families, children, and youth within our community and it continues to support us moving forward. It's a great place to live, work, and play. And respecting the comments and questions that my fellow counselors will have, I continue to support this project. And again, thanks staff for taking the number of reports that have been completed, studies, consolidating it, and the presentation to bring it to this place. And I feel confident that that facility will work very well in our community. So thank you.
Thanks, Nelson. Counselor Goss.
Yep. I've got some concerns about this cost recovery. I see the numbers you pointed out here now. We have a cost recovery. And I understand that you have ameliorating factors for this, and I would like to see those because what I'm looking at in 2016, we have expenses at the Thistle Arena of about a million dollars and a cost recovery of two hundred and thirty-one thousand, a cost return of two hundred and thirty-one thousand dollars, which means we're subsidizing seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars a year on this. And I get concerned because one percent increase on our residential sales tax, or pardon me, our residential taxes.
We don't have that yet.
I was dreaming. That's what I was dreaming about last night, Dave, finding, trying to find that money. On our residential taxes, one percent only brings us two hundred and thirty-six thousand dollars. So that's basically a three percent increase in taxes for an aging population. And my stats, I mean, I've been looking at these stats and asking for stronger and better stats on aging, on the population. With a little bit of work last night, I was able to dig up Ontario population projections from 2008 to 2036, and the numbers don't really look that good for 2000. If I look at it from 2018 through 2028 through 2036, there are only a couple of groups that are going to, I'm not sure, but I'm tired and I'm sick here. I'm sorry for this. I'm not finding the right words. But the age groups five to nine and ten to fourteen will go between 2018 and 2028. Everything else will drop, with the exception of a small bump in the thirty to thirty-nineties. Everything is going to increase in the sixty-five to nineties through 2028. I'm just concerned that we don't have the numbers to benefit to make this work. I'd like to see a better response to this twenty-three percent return on expenses. And if, as you say, that this is somewhat due to the numbers between there and Keewatin, then we should see a really nice big boost from the Keewatin side of it, which will take us well past the twenty-three percent. We've been asking, our target is always the fifty-five percent cost recovery on that amount of stuff. I don't know where we're at. I had asked earlier in the year for what the cost recovery was around the region for different areas. I haven't seen that yet. I'd really like to see that. I'm concerned that while we may be seeing this glowing need for some shiny project on the hill, there might be something we can't really afford. And I'd be concerned about that. I have no problems with development, particularly in the athletic areas. I just want to be sure that we can afford it because we're held down in so many other areas. I don't want the rest of it to be held down. Economic development is a strong driver. I understand that. And I understand also the benefits of tourism, but the cost has to balance out. I don't see that balancing out yet. I'd like to see some of the numbers and I really would like to see some of the historical numbers for around the region because twenty-three percent, when I saw that last night, sick as I was, I drove in the away and drove because it was raining.
I mean, ultimately, yeah, we've noted that in our Canora Major Rec Facility Strategy, we target fifty-five, sixty-five percent. That's noted. A few of, I would say, a lot of our events that we host in terms of user groups using the ice, we've noted that there are some in-kind, and it's not a significant amount, but of course, there are some in-kind usage of the facility and that staff have to accompany and supervise, et cetera. I note that based on the population projections and our demographic in Canora, the demographics surrounding Canora, and the beauty of a fully sensational building, an expanded building, will ultimately, as we discussed, bring in a significant amount of additional revenue that we have not experienced before in Canora and that other communities do in fact experience. And we can certainly get those additional regional wide numbers from other facilities if that would certainly help. But I would just note ultimately that we will bring in and attract additional events that we've never had before, and the numbers are there. And in addition to that, we would attract, obviously, I'll link back to a junior team. There is ultimately revenue generation opportunity there. And I'll point back to the consultants' presentations with regard to the floor space and the design of the building that has commercial retail opportunities developed inside of the footprint of the building that we can accommodate as well. Through agreements and such, we have that ability to modernize it and bring it up to a modern facility that provides various retail food and beverage vendors that the city could obviously undertake through an agreement. But there is, in that building envelope, there is the ability for that kind of revenue generation opportunity as well. Yep, and...
Sorry, just to add to your point there, what are the challenges that we see with single-pat arenas is the, you're spending that amount on that ice plant anyways. And so what happens in this twinning of an arena is you're creating a significant efficiency by twinning the ice plant. The ice plant, the BTUs that are generated there are captured in the building, but what you're doing is you're operating that ice plant basically at the same, almost the same cost that you would as a single pad. So...
With more staff.
With, well, one more is a full-time, and that's actually fairly good considering, yeah. Yeah, one with part-time, yeah. And that's just because...
It's all part of the whole picture that we want to see. I want to see, I want to see, how much is this costing us? Because I'm going to have to go back and defend this to other people. I understand there's a lot of hockey-based people in the room, but I'm going to have to go and defend that to the significant population that is beyond poverty and has really serious issues with residential taxes. We can't even fund our economic development properly.
I totally get that. And I think one of the things I've been experiencing is that, just one more comment on the operational side, is twin-pat arena, we completed in Winnipeg, Seven Oaks Arena, Community Club, basically running, basically Hockey Moms are running the facility as a community. They're profit, not profit, but they are making money on their facility in the way they did it. And unfortunately, this is part of that formula is do you raise your rates, your arena rates, to offset that, to get the recovery back, especially for certain teams or certain, you know, let's say tenants, that kind of thing? So there's ways of capturing that and actually getting back to your fifty-five percent. But that's a process that happens as you design too.
I'd like to see this come considerably closer than halfway to our target.
Counselor Smith?
I have a few comments, so bear with me. And I certainly echo Counselor Goss's comments about what taxpayers can and cannot afford a visiting. Not your comment, it will have to come back to that in the back of the question, okay? Because of course, when we look at capital budget, we prioritize. The fact that this significant cost wasn't in the capital budget, this concerns me. Because when we look at capital, we prioritize all our projects. This makes away our ability to do that. So in my opinion, it should afford that capital budget. That's been the conversation. We've heard very clearly that taxes are high in our community, higher for a lot of some people, and higher for others. And we're really concerned about water and sewer rates all the time, how it's becoming, kind of, changing with the taxes. So we always have to be listening to the taxpayers. We talk about this two hundred and fifty thousand dollar contribution from the city for the engineering study. That's two hundred and fifty thousand dollars plus servicing costs. So that's not true cost. And I think we need to be working out what the service cost, servicing debt, is what it's all going. So, I mean, we need to be putting the actual numbers on the table so that everybody gets a chance to see what's been cost. I'm very happy that we have this turnout from the communities that use the ice type. I would have been happier if somebody had stepped up that whole room with a destination and say, "We're vested. We want to be a partner in this and we'll pay half of, we'll fundraise half of the cost to bring this engineering study to the table." I would like to see that. We have the Rover here making an education. They're investing in this community. And they raised four hundred, our goal is to raise four hundred thousand dollars to that project. Those are the kind of partnerships I want to see. We look at the Jeffrey Mallett Baseball Giants, a community who stepped up to the plate and said, "We will raise that money because we have an interest in that project." And they did. We look at the tennis club. They raised money to, to raise up the tennis thing to pickleball. There's another thing. They stepped up to the plate and said, "We're going to raise that money." The Jeffrey and Mallett Sports Conference is another community group that says, "This is something we want to see in our community. We're going to do that hard work." I mean, if you can all come out for a meeting to say, "I support something," you know, you've got to have skin in the game. That's the kind of community I want to see, to be built on partnerships. The Art Gallery is another one. They're going to raise significant amount of money for the Art Gallery. But we also have to remember all these capital projects in the end are going to need more money for taxpayers because of operating dollars associated with them. We haven't done those long-term studies about what's coming down the pipe here in our community. We have to be aware of that. If you want taxpayers to afford it in this community, you have to invest in it also. I would have been happy to see a deportation like that today. I'm looking forward to one before next council meeting. I'm not finished. Counselor Rosen, give me a couple more minutes. Thank you. So your AOD comments about the Keewatin arena, I see no information here in this report about Keewatin ice time. Why is that missing from this report? Why are total ice towers between the two rates not listed and then total ice time utilized and not utilized? That's the kind of information I want to see. You totally disregard the ice time in Keewatin in this report. That's significant. Your comments call out Keewatin, we're going to have to spend a million dollars on bringing the Keewatin arena up to AODA standards. Well, absolutely. That's mandatory. You're not getting around that. You're spending that money anyway. So bringing those numbers and that issue forward in this report doesn't make any sense to me. The thing about this is that if we're going to have to spend that kind of money in Keewatin to bring that up to AODA standards, we're doing that in every city building by the year 2025. We have significant investment to make in making all of our buildings AODA compliant by the year 2025. So that means nothing in this report to me. It's going to happen anyway. We're going to have to spend that money. So it's not an argument for putting the ice in, in my opinion. You talk about meeting more ice time for bringing in a junior aid hockey. I don't know a lot about juniors, so I'm just going to throw some stuff up. See what's there. We had a junior aid meeting in this community, if I recall, a few years ago. We don't have it anymore. I don't know what the reason is. But when we looked at, and you included that information about the ice time, they are a private enterprise, private business, right? So would they not be paying full-time for their ice rental? Why would the taxpayers be subsidized and have private business enterprise? Might be a good reason for that. I don't know. So because we talk about city staff not being involved, ticket sales or any of that kind of stuff, what's reasonable? So I'm just asking a question. Why would they, if they're a private enterprise, not be paying full ice rental costs? I don't know what it would cost for an hour of ice time. Full cost, I do know that the rental rates are probably a third of what it actually costs a community to run that ice. But if you're bringing in a business venture as a reason to do expansion, then in my opinion, they need to be paying full ice. They're a business organization. So what if they leave in five or 10 years? We build another arena to accommodate a junior aid. Well, what if they leave in a few years and they're not here any longer? Just throwing this up on the table. You can think of all the time. Just want to make sure. I trust that the school hockey is played during school hours, if there's school programs? So they're utilizing those underutilized hours during the daytime?
Daytime. And evening, we have school programs and we have camps as well.
So practice during the daytime, all practice, practices during the daytime and games in the evening? Is that what you're saying?
I can't confirm if their programming is, if there would be a 3:00 PM practice or 3:00 PM game. I can't confirm that.
What I'm saying, if it's a school activity, then they can be playing during school hours and utilizing underutilized ice time. I just throw that out there. I don't know. You can think about it.
Sure.
So just let me see if I brought everything that we're here. Again, disappointed that you didn't pull in the Keewatin information because that's significant to the twinning. We have two rinks already. Certainly concerned about the cost recovery at twenty-three percent. That means the taxpayers are paying up seventy-five percent of the operating costs for the arena. We, and I know that in your timeline, you say, "We do this study and then we look at maybe a month or two later doing plans and then starting construction?" My information is that the last federal budget, there was no indication that there is going to be any infrastructure funding for rec centers.
If I could, just for clarification...
Yeah, please. Thank you.
There's a very modest amount.
Exactly.
Would suggest to council that there's no, there's not enough sufficient background swing with Canora Rec Center matches until at least 2020 and possibly beyond that.
So if that's the case, and I mean, I'm just one counselor here, but I think I've heard it around the table, if we're not getting one-third, one-third, and one-third from the community, we're not building this rink because taxpayers can't afford to do that. So are we pushing this study, pushing this engineering design when we know that the feds, there's no money from the feds to build this, and we talk about moving into construction a month after the engineering design is done? I just want to keep that in your mind because the community can't afford, if the feds aren't kicking in, the community can't afford to build that rink. So I'm just throwing that out there. Should we be waiting to do this, you know, when there's possibly an opportunity that the feds are going to be kicking into the infrastructure? So I just put that out there. You say the job will be created in the private sector, but we already know the city's going to have to create jobs to run the new rink. So, you know, I think under population size, the numbers about the number of rinks in a community for population size, I think we fit those numbers to arenas for our population. I didn't see that in your report, but I've seen that in other...
It's in there.
Is it in there? Or did I...
You saw it in there, but that's no longer the metric they used to do.
Okay. So when I looked at that, it's like, okay. So I don't know. You talk about potential revenues, but still, that cost recovery is, you know, twenty-three percent. How does that change? So, and you also talk about competing with the private sector when it comes to renting the building. So you, and you also talk about competing with the private sector when it comes to renting the building for weddings and that. We always said, you know, so we, we don't instruct it to keep the private sector and have that passive in our community. So, you know, I'm gonna leave that there. I'll probably think of a couple more things, but I'm just throwing that out there to think, to think about that.
Sure. Yeah, I can respond to a few, not the Kuwaitan number. Um, but in terms of, um, the junior team, um, in terms of what the hourly rates may be, that, as I've mentioned before, is, these are just base premature numbers. In terms of agreements that the city, the municipality strikes with the junior ownership group is up to the total discretion of council to enter into an agreement in terms of the hourly rate, et cetera. The rental of space, all of that will impact obviously any cost recovery or any gen, uh, net generated revenue. So that's, it's too premature. Those are just numbers that obviously they're pretty base and average that in terms of the opportunities to generate some revenue and cost recovery is there for the junior ice team. In terms of the efficiencies which you discussed when you expand a facility, staff felt it was too premature to provide some specifics in terms of that because that actually comes in all of the design, detailed design, which we're aiming to get to. We felt that we couldn't generate in terms of, um, staffing that we had around the table to generate any numbers to provide in this report for any of those efficiencies. Obviously, we are very much aware that once you expand the facility, uh, there's going to be some additional costs in terms of operating. But there are, uh, great programs out there that we outlined that would provide, um, some subsidy, a major subsidy in terms of upfront capital, but in terms of long-term operating, such as energy. I mean, we spend three hundred-plus thousand a year in, uh, electrical for that facility. We have the ability to minimize that significantly, uh, and that would come in the detailed design. So we couldn't provide that unfortunately, uh, but we did note it, uh, in terms of the verbiage that we provided in the report that we are very much aware and we have every intention as a city to mitigate those costs. The timelines that, uh, Councilor Smith outlined, they're preliminary. That's just in a perfect world. So I'll respond to it though. Like in a perfect world, if we had the, the grant to apply to, uh, you know what? We could probably get this shovels in the ground by next year. So, but it's not. We have to wait for that funding. There are funding envelopes that, uh, are cost shared between, uh, federal, provincial, however, we're going through provincial elections. So things are up in the air. The intention of this, uh, recommendation is to bring the plans to the table. We have them ready. So act, actually, once there is something open, we can apply. We have the documentation ready to apply and get the significant amount of funding that will be available. Could be next year, could be the, the year after. But we're looking for council's endorsement to move forward, uh, this year so we can get those drawings and we have the ability to apply and scan the, our recreational amenities. And, uh, the junior agreements again, I mean, as I touched on, that, uh, that's up to council and everything else in terms of anything to do with the junior realm, uh, that's at the discretion of council in terms of generating that revenue, setting those rates. In terms of the previous junior team in Canora, I don't know how long ago that was. I don't know if it, if it was. No, I, I don't think so, but, you know, who knows?
Yeah, it was, it was here for quite a while.
Yeah.
And then the whole world sort of changed as I, I'll sum up later, but the, the world changed and it's, it's, it's like economics and the up and down swings that, uh, upper level governments don't plan for. And, and our grandkids are gonna pick up the cost for us. That's another subject, but, um, we're not in the same world. When you take a look at the communities out there that have junior teams today in comparison, they couldn't even have dreamt of year falls readily having a junior team. I mean, some of these communities couldn't have dreamt of having a junior team back then. We were really the only community big enough and now we're three times that the size of these communities. So the world has changed there. So there is a better opportunity to maintain and sustain a junior team for the long term. And Canora is where they want to be.
Right. And in terms of the key weight and accessibility number, that was just to give council an idea of, um, the scale to which this, the dollar amount to which upgrading a facility costs of Kuwaitan size. Ultimately, it's about a million dollars. The envelope in which we're planning for this expansion would cover all of those accessibility components. So it wasn't basically that versus that. It was essentially, this is to give you an idea of what an accessibility upgrade would cost on its own. But it's included within the, the, the designs that will be put forward. That's all it was.
So having said that, we don't build any other tiny, uh, building without making them a hundred percent AOD by any way.
Absolutely. Yeah.
We're spending our money in Kuwait anyways and in every other building in this community. So those, all I'm saying is that those are future major investments that we're gonna be having to make by the year twenty twenty five. Another, um, hit on the tax base. And just one more comment, Meridae. When we talk about fifteen, about fifteen million dollar project, by the time we look at relocating with baseball guys, we always talk about two million dollar complex. Um, we talk about parking, uh, the abatement for the methane gas. This project is a twenty million dollar project. Not gonna be a fifteen million dollar project. So there's always cost overruns and I would expect that this project would be no different. And as for energy efficiency, we, every new build we do in this city has, we do it in an energy efficient way anyway. So that's our standard now.
And the significant scale of the building will provide a significant energy reduction in terms of the costs over the long run. That's what we know for sure.
Absolutely. And that's where we're going with every building. So that's no different than any other new build that we would do in this community. Just the cost. Um, the other thing is, uh, I just wanted to mention, and I don't know because I don't go to the thistles games. I know that they're, the triple A thistles are a very, um, um, professional, uh, league in this community. But I wonder what their attendance is when they go and play that hockey. That is great hockey. That, um, this is triple A hockey. How many, how much of family, how many people come up and watch that hockey? What's the revenues room offer that? Will it be better with junior age? Are we, is the community coming up and supporting that level of hockey? Just putting it out there. Thanks, Matt.
You're welcome. Councilor Rosen and then Councilor Woskies, and then I'll wrap it up.
I'd like to thank, uh, Councilor Glass for coming in today, knowing he's very sick because he saved me a lot of talking because I asked a lot of his comments and, and his request for information. I also thank Councilor Smith for raising a lot of the, uh, questions that I had in doing my analysis on this, uh, complex, this project. There's a few other things, and, and Councilor Glass and Councilor Smith mentioned it about, uh, could be, uh, the increase in the tax rate just to raise the funding to pay for this. Uh, so we always mention the Community Prosperity Trust Fund. Now, I may be behind a little bit in investment theory, but any trust fund that I've ever been involved in from an investment point of view, which is what this trust fund is, it is in essence to raise, invest in projects or financing opportunities to generate revenue to subsidize your operating costs or, or fund capital costs, which I think is what the Community Prosperity Trust Fund was intended to be, to do. To save the taxpayers money or increase the tax rate. Would I be correct on that? Yeah. So the more we borrow or take money from that Community Prosperity Trust Fund and lend it to the city. Yeah, that, if you look at that as an investment, but the property taxpayers of the city are the ones that have to pay that back. So are we really saving the property taxpayer money by having this trust fund? And we're dipping into that quite a bit. Lending it to the city at three percent is probably the only investment this trust fund has that's meeting its three percent obligation or goal. And it's not meeting its, uh, its, uh, revenue from the, our investments, uh, to meet that three percent. But you borrow from the trust fund, taxpayers have to pay that back. There's reference here to the trust fund. So I just wanna know that. And I don't think you've considered the increases in taxes that would have to be generated to pay back that trust fund for the money that you want to borrow for this event. Now, before I go any further, I'd like to make absolutely clear. The concept is excellent. But there's a few other things that we have to consider. In twenty-ten, we hired a company by the name of B M A to do a sewer and water study on our costs. And at that time, I think we had a total twenty-nine million-plus dollars total deferred funding deficit in our sewer and water, just our sewer and water. But when you did an analysis of the burden on the residential taxpayer, uh, we were, I think, at one point nine, almost two percent. And in planning and sustainable communities, when you get two percent of your average residential tax revenue being used to fund your sewer and water, you're at a point where your community may not be sustainable in the long run. Then we had to face our asset management plan, which I think we're total, that's for all of our assets. Okay, buildings and parks and the whole bit. I think we're at fifty-eight million dollars total deferred funding deficit. We gotta pay that back some. We gotta incur that up by mandatory, right? We have to do something with the asset management. Some money, I forget exactly what it is, but we have to incur it each year. When you get, when a municipality gets to over sixty percent, sixty percent, and Matt, I think you're probably aware of the same statistic. Based on your residential tax base, there's a, a ratio or a formula to use whether your community is sustainable based on the total assets that you have to fund. Right now, we have a lot of assets. And the, and the support to fund those assets is more than sixty percent, which indicates a non-sustainable position. We can change that by new industry, preferably in the industrial and, uh, fabrication, secondary industrial, industrial. It's a nice concept. I would like it to, to go, proceed, but I don't think it's the right time for all of those reasons. Uh, we have a lot of deferred funding deficit money that has to be raised to look after our present assets and core services that we have to provide. That legal cost for Smith that mentioned, that people are legal because they can't afford property taxes. Well, if you concentrate on economic development to tourism, that's all pretty well entry-level jobs. Entry-level jobs do not generate the property taxes because of the income that they have and the value of the homes that they have to maintain our current assets. So a lot of thought has to go in there. But Councilor Glass and Councilor Smith ask a lot of questions of information that I think is needed before a final decision is made. I'm not saying that the decision is gonna be no, but that information, I think, could go a long way in helping me decide, uh, my direction. Thank you.
Councilor Woskies.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And thank you all for coming. Now, we've had a long discussion on peculiary costs. And the opportunity to review the report that you have made. And we request that report for us to take a look and see the opportunity to make something happen in our community. That concept for me is still real. And it's real because people want to see some opportunity for us to provide a service for the services that they see in the future and now. And I wanna make sure that we have that discussion. And today has been an opportunity of coming together. And you have placed for us a report that outlines that opportunity to get this idea over. And it's not an idea. It's a concept that we all have to provide a service for our young people who twenty years from now are gonna be thirty-eight, just like me. And, uh, so, but I think it's important for us at this point to review all those particular issues. But I support it. I only have one suit and that's all I can afford. So I do understand a little bit about costs. And I think it's an opportunity for us not to defer or to reject good ideas. And this is a good idea. And it's a service that we want to make sure begins to make changes. And so I'm all for it. We'll have a long discussion with council. We'll have an exciting time with council. This is the longest we've ever been allowed to speak. Sharon took most of the time. And, uh, but it's, I think, uh, I think what I'm saying to you is that the concept, the idea, we need to make it happen. And you've, uh, made me excited about that in your report and the outlining of what you've given us. But it's an opportunity for discussion and that, and that discussion will continue. And maybe we put a, a limit on it, you know? I was gonna go to the Olympics this year, but I didn't make enough money to get there. But maybe next Olympics, four years from now. So it's always a change. And there's an opportunity for us to make those changes. So I'm excited about the idea. I'm excited about your report and it outlines pecu, pecuniary costs for it. And I think it's important for us to do that. And there's that wonderful word in a world of, I don't understand, taxation. My friends bring that up every now and then. But we haven't, you know, as First Nations people, asked them to give us some money too. But we've been very kind letting you live here, but you're giving the money to somebody else. I think it's important for us to, uh, to begin to do, to turn it together. And, and, and you've done anything with this report for me is that you stimulated a good discussion, which means it's a good report. And I think it's important for us to see if that's the real goal we want. We have a large number of young people here to date and we have a large number of people who have come to say, "I'm interested." So what do we do? So we will continue with the discussion, but I think in the end, how long we have been doing it. I was gonna go to the Olympics this year, but I didn't want to make it. I didn't have any money. Secondly, I wasn't a very good sports person. You know, that's the various options. I was gonna be an announcer, but nobody wanted me. So the change has happened, but the thing is that we have ideas and that's the exciting part. And we have an opportunity to make those changes. Thank you.
Thanks, Colin. I, uh, well, first off, I wanna recognize, I'll get you to my good friend, uh, Francis Kavanagh, who helped me, helped carry me around last summer. Um, actually, a, a, a few things on here. It was, um, Matt, a very good report. Um, I, I, I think reading it through here and, and unlike, you know, um, some counselors, I, I, first off, I wanna recognize the different opinions of counselors. It was fantastic because there were some really good points brought up and, and the fact that it sharpens everybody's game. It sharpens everybody's game, "Okay, well, if we're gonna do this, then we better find a way of doing it because your first presentation isn't gonna cut it." And so this is just the way it is. I, for me, because I've been around for quite a while, I read between the lines. The stuff that some counselors might have missed, I seen it and, and, and understood why because I've seen a lot of these reports over the years and especially the one when we added on to the rec center and we put in all the swimming pools and the workout rooms and everything else. And especially the one when we added on to the rec center, and we put in all the swimming pools and the workout rooms and everything else. And I can tell you that the first, and Counselor McMillan and Woskis were here for that. First round didn't cut it there either, until they come back and, and took another look at it and, and some of the opportunities around it. So I guess what I'm saying is, I want to thank you for not sugarcoating it, because you didn't. When I looked at this, I thought, wow, I could have found a few million bucks in there. And, but you didn't put it in there. So you didn't sugarcoat it, you didn't try and pass something over council that wasn't realistic. And so it's, there is some opportunities there. The, just a couple of clarifications as far as sewer and water, which is a good point that Counselors brought up. It's got nothing to do with taxes. It's, it's a user pay system. We do have a big deficit like most communities in, in the country. Ours is a little bigger because we have sixty-four lift stations, more than the city of Toronto, which presents some major issues. But it's still the people on sewer and water that have to pay for that. Me and Mort, where we live, we don't have to pay for that. And, and, and should, oh, pardon me, Counselor Smith too.
You're on speaker, you're on your other conscience.
Yeah, so, but some of, some of the opportunities here that I think, and I don't think have been overlooked. I think you put a very good report forward that, as I said, didn't sugarcoat it. If I take a look at the rec center expansion, it actually turned out, it worked out well. It's the capacity, a lot of questions whether it was, the capabilities of it being the capacity and, and Counselor McMillan and Woskis will remember them, them discussions. And staffs that were here will remember them discussions. I think where the opportunity is, is a couple of things. On the accessibility, there's a lot of funding out there as long as you're going to spend at least a quarter million bucks. Well, we're going to spend a quarter million bucks to do accessibility, whether it's in the rec center, creating a rec center. There's money there, if you're going to spend two hundred and fifty thousand, there's not money there unless you're going to spend less, which doesn't generally happen that way. Again, these budgets are sometimes geared to larger cities, as I've been saying over the last couple of years, with government funding that's come across. And this one actually might work for us, and you may be able to pick it up. The green funds and the green opportunities are, are huge. As I said, there's two hundred and fifty million with the federal budget. And I think a lot of the project, especially if you're going to have a facility that is going to be pretty much self-sustaining, and I believe it can be, and done properly, I believe it can be. If you have the solar panels, electricity, as we said, we've just partnered with Thunder Bay Hydro. With Canora Hydro, basically, it's changing so fast that people can't keep up. So I think the opportunities around whether it's solar panels on the roof. I never used to be that fond of solar panels, but technology's come a long way over the last few years, and it's going so fast. It's going to change dramatically, and, and I believe there is a way of running this at pretty much that level. So, I mean, there is some, there is some great opportunities around there. And, and the world we live in today, the windows of opportunity that open up, we live in a world where you can get money for that. We can get, we, we live in a world where you can maybe even meter back and, and even make some money on it. I don't know for sure. There are studies that, that can be done, and, and maybe Canora Hydro, or maybe somebody else can help us out in it. The FCM Green Fund, we have been very fortunate, the city, we've pulled a lot of money out of that already. And we're moving forward quite quickly. We've just seen the savings that have happened just in streetlights alone. Some of the other opportunities, because I could talk on this for a long time, but I think there's a lot of opportunities there on partnerships. The other one is a major sponsor. And somebody else that might be very, very serious about a facility in Canora might be pulled into this fold as maybe a major sponsor, as opposed, and maybe a public-private partnership. There's different opportunities that can be worked on. I honestly believe it can make it. I remember, I'll go back to J and M, I remember when we were doing the rowing club and the criticism was taken then. And we have a world-class facility, second to no rowing facility or venue in the world. So I've seen the success stories over the years that were marginal, and I argued against some of them myself. And I still got some concerns here, because like the other counselors, I'm hearing from the Black Sturgeon property owners, they're my neighbors, and they're unhappy. Because the taxes are so high, so we do have some hurdles to get over. But I think at the end of the day, with looking at these things like sponsors, looking at the other partners, and this isn't going to be a normal build where it's one-third, 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 that's not going to happen. We have an election coming up. We don't know who's going to be elected. We know there's going to be changes, and we don't know what funding levels are going to be there. There's a federal election in two years, no, it's a year and a half now. So I'll probably be dumping a lot of money next year. Should we have it shelf-ready? We've always prided ourselves in having things shelf-ready. I think it is a good idea to have this shelf-ready, to move forward and have it shelf-ready. Because if the money doesn't come, we know we're not building it. That's just a reality check, because there's no way we can finance fifteen million bucks, it's just not realistic. And unless the private sector really wants to kick in and help out. But I think there's some great opportunities here, and I, and I really thank you for not sugarcoating it, Matt. And I think there's some, some things that we have to look at. I'm willing to talk to people myself on some possible partnerships and, and how we can make this a reality. When it comes to, one other thing, because, is, is the demographic. Like modest numbers. If you look at the demographics, demographic overpowered district, our population increases higher than anywhere. And it's because of the indigenous populations moving into the communities. I believe that is going to increase dramatically over the next twenty years. And I believe the, these numbers are going to probably be very low in comparison. But again, you didn't sugarcoat it, you, you, you put it out there, this is what, this is what it's saying. I believe that's going to change, and, and I think for all the right reasons. So a lot of opportunities here, a lot of good discussion, a lot of good, roadblocks have been thrown up the same way. We've got to get over this roadblock before we can go to the next one. But I do think that we, to, to move to the stage. And if we go, you know, that is two hundred and fifty thousand, yeah, it's got to come from somewhere. And we could get down, turn down. I think the partnership in this is key.
Dave, just a last comment, just an opinion about.
Wasn't going to, but go ahead.
Just an opinion about user fees for sewer and water. I think that's just the politician's disguise of a tax, really. Because you still have to pay for it. At one time, those services were provided at no cost through the regular, normal tax process. But when it gets to total deferred deficit funding, you have to correct that. That needs to be hidden tax, in my opinion.
Okay, Counselor McMillan, there'd be no more than twice. I'm sticking to the procedural pilot.
I'll be short. I, I appreciate the dialogue that's taken place this morning, and for people coming to listen and the presentation. We, we, as a council, this council, the previous council, have been at this for some time. And I think a couple of key elements, Dave, you mentioned and others have alluded to. Is there's a wonderful opportunity for partnerships here. It's a community facility, it's community ownership, and I think they're sitting there. I'd be optimistic to say that I think potential partnerships are sitting there waiting for us as a council to make a decision to go to that next step. And to me, this report substantiates it, and I just ask the council to consider. Once some of these questions are answered, this has long-lasting positive economic benefits. For Canora, I'm, I'm, I'm a hockey fan, there's absolutely no doubt about that. But there's other benefits to this facility for the community and the population, the takes and seniors, and all across the demographics. And, and to you, young folks that are here, keep us going. Thanks for coming to a council meeting. It may deter you from wanting to go around for a council, but give it some thought, give it some thought. So thanks, Dave, for that extra minute.
Thank you. Okay, so this will come to council next week for a vote. That'll be the next debate.
And you're welcome back, by the way.
Bring some money.
Tim might have been there.
I had to get my computer to work, it wasn't working.
Okay, get back to it, we, we do have a, another time item, we're going to move into operations, and, because Jeff has an appointment. So get to, we'll start with three point one, the multi-unit single water meter.
Just to be sure. Or am I declared a conflict of interest, I don't get the paperwork, so let me find it.
Okay, Jeff, go ahead.
All right. I'm assuming you've all had an opportunity to read this. I think, I'd like to start off by saying that despite having a recommendation here for a decision to date. We do have comments from our legal, at Glazer's, indicating that we should probably delay this. While we're getting more matters of opportunity to discuss it. Certain council members, we'll be able to get a resolution, but that'd be an open door for public, uh, individuals and public. Uh, and we can actually pass this in. So, as you know, council announced that I look at, I look for means to, um, yeah, I guess put more equity into the system of activity in the chairs. I think right now we still have a very limited, have a single unit, but we have living units within it that are not being charged the service rate. They only pay the one service rate per that building. And this report goes through how we would be able to pay Zen over five years, including service trackers, according to the building limits.
Are you done?
Yes.
Yeah. Do you know what, I went over this a couple of times, and I, I, I think it's, you know, sometimes be careful what you ask for, because when first people brought this forward, and I can see, you only see this going one way, in order to be fair, and you've done it exactly as that. I, I think it's, I think it's phenomenal. I, I agree, maybe waiting or have some consultation. I don't know how you can be any fairer. I don't know how anybody can argue this living in the one now, there's only one. And even, and even here, they're reading this, right? They're probably still going to get off lucky, because you might not get the full proper flows with one meter as opposed to single meters. So they, they might even, so I, I think this is fair. I think it's, it's some revenue that we hadn't really thought of before, but all of a sudden, somebody made us aware that we don't want to pay. Well, I'm sure every single property owner that has one meter in their house would agree solely with this presentation.
Thanks, I just should maybe get you out of the, the uncertainty of a large meter. You know, depending on the usage of that building, the impact of that, there is sort of, in, in a building that most people are approaching at work every Sunday. Maybe I'm, I'm having a lot of rough days at the same time, that's very accurate. Part of it, because there's a large function, we see that these, uh, some kind of, some, uh, not really, uh, so. Those moments that are going through, when they're utilizing bad water, the other things aren't, yeah, but we, we would be in the, we should, we should really go away and put out a metric around that. We don't have a way to quantify that. And it really should be our focus here, that we make existence as a service, as a service.
You may have any questions, Counselor?
I, I support the comment, I think it's a positive report, and we'll await the sound, Jim.
Well, I'll, I'll report me, and I, I, I'm not going to do that.
Excellent.
Give us a little warning, we'll wear an improved suit.
Well, when, when you think about it again, though, when you talk, when you talk, it's fair. And, and you look at the, all the residential owners that probably seen this now and say, you've had this free ride for how long? And so, so.
Dave, could you not use the word pre-ride? I'll leave it with you.
Okay, reduced ride.
Reduced fare.
Subsidized.
Subsidized.
Yeah, I don't know about it. Okay, Jeff, thank you, three point two, Jeff?
That council provided for the rehabilitation of nine-streets each pumping station in a amount of five hundred ninety thousand nine hundred plus HSD. It issues a cost of contract administration inspection divided by only an amount of eleven thousand dollars to handle a sixty thousand dollar project contingency. And the sole bid received was from Natchitoches, and, and the amount of four hundred and thirty-eight thousand nine hundred for this one.
Yeah, I agree, straightforward risk management issue here, I think. When you want to money the waters and create a rolling forget, then, then you. Three point three.
Um, recommending that council, that endorsement service, like the work we have with the past program, that fulfills five, seven point services, I guess. This is a, a great program that came across my desk, I actually received a phone call from, uh, local representatives from, uh, L A S. And, uh, the report outlines its residents' incentive opportunity, they have low, low-cost insurance, uh, that will protect them in, in, in their systems and water, or certain.
So, Counselor?
So Jeff, in a nutshell, for the average residential home for about two hundred and fifty dollars a year. Uh, the comprehensive insurance, if, if a line breaks in, in the yard, you put an insurance policy to address it. And the other view is the grant.
Yes, that's a really big one with the driving funds, uh, and, and, and I actually, you know, the, 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 uh, so, so this is a significant.
I don't know if council remembers, when I first brought this back from EMO, when we talked about putting this in, and I mentioned, I brought it up to councils probably two years ago now. Um, at least, and, and, and L A S, of course, was just one of our subsidiary companies, super benefits belonging to them. When they brought this up, I looked, wow, like, because of the issues we have here, and what a phenomenal program. And, and I believe Hamilton was the first to, to go with it, turned out, turned out very well.
When I first came on council, I attended the last session where they, this was brought up, but I think this has been around since two thousand nineteen ninety-nine or something.
Yeah.
The only question I have is, why did we wait so long?
Well, they've just come to L A S, so a couple of years ago, and, and, and Hamilton was the, um, I didn't say the Guinea pig, but I think they were the first ones, because I'm a, I remember right now. And so this, it's only been like a few years offered through L A S.
And that's on his life, you call, uh, L A S.
Okay. Hey, one more, three point four.
Um, this is a bridge made up to her, uh, and, and, uh, should be able to show all the, uh, just a little bit of, uh, for the funding.
Now, Jeff, we will still be applying for funding, because these aren't going to all be done at the same time. So we'll still be applying for a top-up for the O C F. And, and any, and, and any funding that might come up. Just when I was reading this, I'm trying to think of how to make it green. And, uh, if we can make it green and turn it into a bus, you can get paid for it. Uh, so, um, how we can possibly.
These are, I really, there's, there's, so, we, it was very difficult for us to incorporate, uh, this, this, the, 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 the.
Do we incorporate some type of carbon?
I, I knew where you were. I, I just, I don't think that we'd be able to incorporate the element of carbon extraction, it's a very, it's a lot of.
But even the deterioration in, in the carbon footprint now as opposed to tomorrow.
It's something that, you know, we'll, we, maybe sure that we'll include in any of our proposals regarding bridges, you know, that they are at least considering the option. It is something that, you know, we'll, we, maybe, you know, we'll include in any of our, uh, proposals regarding bridges, you know, that they are at least considering the option. Uh, but, uh, yeah, it, it is pretty weird since we can, uh, prepare to resist these structures, it's, uh, Jeff.
And, and, and that one, what was the name of the, uh, wood bridge company that really wanted, uh?
The one that gave you tell that we, uh, spoke into, I'm sorry, I don't have the name of the company.
I'll, I'll, I'll find out, I'm actually at an F P innovation thing at the end of the month, and I'll, I'll, I'm, the name is, I'm a, I'm, they're very, very keen.
On the COVID day, you're, you're, you're helping out, you know, we're in trouble, the one that, uh, Mark, I, uh, 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 uh.
Okay, I'll get a hold of them, and because, um, Mr. DiMaggio might like this as parting, um, project before he retired.
Hi, just council, um, Karen, um, to, um, the O C F funding, I just, when we talk about withdrawing this from the O C F formula-based funding, can you just explain to me a little bit, um, do we have a pot of O C F money already?
There is an annual allocation, and please, please jump in at any time, there's an annual allocation, and if you want to, we got a, uh, yeah, so that's, uh, for, for, for your allocation. Okay, and O C F, we can actually get on, uh, the, uh, the, uh, the, uh, the, uh.
Is, is, um, is this project, did you cover the O C F funding?
I don't know that answer, okay, so, it, it will be, um, to, uh, we are going to be wanting to, uh, a little, allowing to.
Okay.
We're gas tanks.
So, we have, um, we have three hundred seventy-nine thousand as an allocation in twenty seventeen, uh, five hundred and thirty-seven as an allocation in twenty eighteen, and I am, and eight hundred and twenty-five thousand as an allocation in twenty nineteen, and we're, um, now we're just getting that money. So, if we were to do this project, we would be leaving all of twenty seventeen, all of twenty eighteen, and two hundred and twenty-four thousand dollars in twenty nineteen, um, funny.
That's different.
Oh, sorry, twenty twenty, we'll be dipping into twenty twenty.
That's correct, I have, I have confirmed, uh, by email that we are allowed to do that. Okay, that's great.
And, I don't know if you could, if you could, if I could sum up.
So, we're committed to not using that funding until twenty twenty, and we've heard of our twenty twenty allocation.
Good, because it's starting to take care of some of our big backlog work.
Okay, wait one, we can't just fill it in, shut that street off?
Hey, if you're not shutting down third street.
Sorry.
Watch it, Sharon's feeling good today.
Yeah. Okay, we're good then?
Just, uh, the one thing, Heather, um, with that other, related to this, that we could, uh, when is that?
Thank you, Jeff.
Thanks, Jeff.
Okay, back up to finance and admin, strategic, strategic plan update, one point one.
Yeah, so, uh, similar to last year, uh, just provide a progress report on the previous year's, uh, highlights, um, so, definitely twenty seventeen, some of the, uh, there's a combination of bigger events, with, uh, Monday, Canada, um, the world event, too, that can start to, as well as, uh, some internal service improvements, so, the website, you can buy, uh, station form, as well as, uh, uh, the, the section program. So, those are just a few of the items from my last, is, uh, I couldn't have reported, but sixteen pages long, there's definitely a lot of, uh, progress that we made, um, in previous year, and then, as well as, you did the appendix being, uh, or was you off table, too, so, provided, uh, uh, some, uh, uh, some stat update from, uh, previous report was provided on here.
It's, uh, actually a report, you know, the funny thing going through it is you go, oh, macro.
Thank you so much.
Wow, that was my, yeah, stuff's gone through, and, and, and the other thing I, I sort of picked up on there, the Kirk's department had a lot of heavy weight on them, too, during this thing, and, thank you, uh, uh, but, yeah, a great report, and, and it just, it's sort of like, because you just forget that, it's, well, we get tomorrow, we get, but you, you go through it, you go, wow.
I think it's all obviously ongoing, uh, this, uh, some, uh, some, like, Monday, Canada, uh, once in a, uh, ten, twenty-year kind of, uh, so, I know it was, uh, definitely, uh, uh, there's, uh.
I, just, just a comment, I would agree with it, and I know communications will take care of it, but some of these things are always good to get out to the public, because often what we hear is, and I know that'll be done, often what we hear is, well, what's the city doing? We don't see anything happen over the past year, well, if you've got time for a cup of coffee, hey, look, um, economic development, operations, all areas have, uh, been moving forward.
There's only one thing, when I was looking at the ice, I was thinking, yep, it's almost the middle of April, we'll get that snow machine off the ice. No, not for another month, not for another month as well.
They were driving on the ice, uh, they're driving on the ice down my, uh, please.
Oh, yeah, they're still.
Yeah. Lots of ice.
Okay. Easy, thank you. Community foundation support candidate, many. All right.
Okay, so, the comments I'm going to make, aside of to that report, the one after it, um, your requests are consistent with, with our policies and direction, we would like to report, and it's also consistent with C R A reporting, um, that it's not closely connected to, to.
Any questions on that? Okay, community foundation, growing club.
Same, same.
Same thing, basically, yeah, so. Okay, one point four.
Jonathan? What do you think? I don't think they're being, being surprised here, super water, um, that's always the question, I don't know if they have it for us.
Sort of housekeeping. If we can get that out of the room.
Okay.
Councilman Bell.
I think it's just important to mention that you did have a full discussion.
Oh, yeah, oh, yeah, 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 this has been, yeah.
It did come to us.
And, uh, water waste, water, basically, same thing.
Per the V M A recommendation.
Yeah. One point six. Water rate increases.
That's per the V M A recommendation, is what the, and, and.
Down to five point five.
Yeah.
Okay, everybody fine, we've had lots of talk, you're right about this, we've discussed that a lot of times, and we've worn it out, and worn it down, but here's what we are. Bring it forward. Okay, wayfinding signage.
So, we find a project where the schedule is being completed by December thirty, March of twenty seventeen, and the full budget amount wasn't included in last year, uh, but that the city was successful in receiving an amendment to February twenty-eighth of twenty eighteen, and the bulk of the work was actually being done earlier this year, so, um, this request is to amend the budget to carry forward, or carry forward the time spent money from twenty seventeen into twenty eighteen, which was the time spent on that.
Okay, one thing on this, because this is underway, it all hasn't been expended, the Main Street announcement that just come through EMO, um, what do we get, fifty thousand, Charlotte? Fifty, fifty-one thousand can be used for wayfinding, can be used for facade improvement, so that's some, uh, new money. Yeah, so it just, uh, it's available, reduces our. I'm sorry, I got ahead of myself.
Councilman Bell. Uh, I support this, just a comment, I don't know about others, but I've heard positive feedback on the signage, in the community, so I, I think it, first of all, takes people to get adjusted to it, and they look at it, but, um, I, I've heard very positive feedback, uh, especially with the, uh, with the languages, the two languages, I'm gonna, uh.
Great. See, oh, one point eight.
Um, so this is a renovation as a report to the inside of City Hall, primarily driven on a couple factors, one is on that, um, our lease has been terminated, that is not covered, so eventually that's, now, you will be here, and, and, uh, regular financial assistance towards the, um, so, it's going to take a bit of, uh, just a bit of length, and, and, uh, who's, um, for City Hall. Um, and on the outside of that, there is always lacking space and availability for offices, so this report is to use renovation to, uh, add additional offices.
Any questions? Just with something like this, and just renovation, how much of this would be done by our end house director? One point nine, we're, we're getting mad at the carpet, you see. No, we have a carpet there. I know we have a high school, a carpet. Me too.
Uh, as well, so video, video surveillance policy, um, there was, this was driven primarily, uh, on review of policy, as I had a request from a public person, the, uh, Um, there was, this was written primarily on a review of the policy, as I had a request from a public person, and I wanted to review the policy and the umbilaries. Um, to make it clear how we need to public, public access, and that is to be reviewed as well. And I wanted to ensure that the policy is clear on what the purpose is of the review, which is for streaming. Um, so much security, so probably, so the policy just really requires some guidance, and then certain requirements.
Questions? One point ten, election signs by law.
Mine as well, um, so as you all know, here we're hearing up for the twenty eighteen municipal election. This is another piece to the elections that I review the elections, sign by law, and every four years. To make sure that I capture any changes, uh, you are aware that there's free advertising now, but there's requirements with that, they have to follow the signed by law, but then also has to be registration process. So this updating is our, our fashion, the current.
I'll read it here. Councilor McMillan?
You want to stand up and make that statement, so you're ready? I, I appreciate these policies coming forward where they show the highlight where the change is in. It makes it so much easier than when you're reading all the reports and you find it, you get it together, so I appreciate that.
Great. Okay, one point one one.
One point five one, um, there is some, um, um, there is a lot where you got to keep these, um.
Um, I actually, just because of my former life way back in the eighties, nineties, I, I do, and, um, maybe I've dated this, but actually, just did some comparisons and asking some private sector, and we're pretty competitive. We have, um, and I believe in being parent and, you know, people were actually, um, were actually our employees, or, I don't care. And benefits and, uh, we didn't ship in scale or something, couldn't find anybody that was that competitive.
Great. I mean, we've already negotiated. One point one two, you've raised our cement update.
I have to go back to the report for what has happened since the last report. Um, and, um, and, um, you know, there's always some information, and partners, um, they're happy to have access to that information. A lot of training happened in two thousand and seventeen, a lot of improvement happened in the other funding, so.
I noticed that you're changing your exit interview, um, um, process in the report, and I know we had a renovation at one time, that exit, you know, the exit interview should be rolled up. I mean, you don't get, if you're doing an exit interview, you want to ensure that, um, the information is utilized from that report. So, um, there's no eternal, um, this expensive, and maintaining employees is whatever it was. So I would be, um, looking for exit interview rollups, and, um, maybe there's opportunity for council to see those, that rollup at some time to identify issues within our HR department.
You were sure employees might be decent, and it would give them confidential?
I'm not saying putting names in there, but I'm just talking about a general rollup of information, absolutely, you would not include personal information. I think there's some utility in doing that.
Do we have to take a look at how we could accommodate more examples, that, that people?
Only if it becomes an issue, because then if it becomes an issue, then that's something you want to look at, and that information will be good information to identify some of the issues with the workaholic staff.
I just wrote an exit interview call last week, so, um, I have it coming forward to the HRT for review, so we can look at that within the policy. And it does talk about, um, what, where that information is going to be used, so, um, I guess as part of our recognition, we have a exit interview policy, so that's done. And so that will be coming through next, so I got some, like, information, information to add, so.
Exit interview, right, now, but. Good, now, let's, and I'm going to see that, so I'm just going to, I have another comment, there's, um, you're doing, um, staff or, um, doing more after all that. You know, we are more close to that, I'm sure that this one is probably, so guys, um, we're not, we're just getting a little bit of, um, and that is one question.
Um, I think as one of the, one of the outcomes of the organizational reviews, um, this was in there in setting it up and establishing it, and Sharon, I'm, I'm, I'm pleased with the update. And, uh, it's good to see, and things continue to move forward, appreciate it.
Okay, okay, dog operations, just kidding. Indemnival Services, four point one.
Yeah, yeah.
Could I speak to that, Matt? You're picking up Greg Archer.
You don't want more flogging, do you?
Yeah, well, uh, to the, uh, so, uh, just quickly, obviously, the passing of legislation, the one for these, uh, on certain channels and wage. This recommendation, um, applies to, uh, the students, but, uh, with the, uh, under eighteen runners, who are twenty or under thirty. So as you can see, the proposed rates are there, and, and, uh, we will, uh, we promise to stop, but, uh, this will be happening.
So nothing changed from the, um, rate increases that we had for minimums?
I'm taking the education that for the, uh, the students.
So we kept them on the same grid as the norm in, from, you know.
So what we did is, um, with the grid, uh, all the different, um, institutions, none of them did not, it was the only one. There was a forty cent increase for each step, and then if you stayed an extra year, you got another increase. So, um, and that was implementing what common had, because the encouragement for this kids to stay with that, and, um, from, uh, school attendant to instructor to guard, to instructor guard. Uh, gave them incentive to get qualifications to move up, and we sent it to stay for that second year. But we were finding that some of the kids were not moving along that way, so what we did is with the, um, uh, aquatic facility, took a look at, what did we do for qualifications to move up? And gave them encouragement to get that big step, and we did that, instructor guard position at the very end, and then encouragement for you to stay at that point, that second year. So we did not discuss from a lower, but there's encouragement, say, the more you get, and you get that full qualification of instructor guard, you get that higher level in the second year.
Is this going to be explained to the students and then, uh, we have an understanding?
I would, as the reasons for that. I understand that, that Crystal was going to talk to the students.
Four point two.
So the municipal accommodation tax, uh, just briefly, and then I'm going to go over to Josh, just, uh, just in the background, so. But, uh, I didn't know, ever, uh, we received a letter from the Minister of the Folks, there's outlining the opportunity for this house to implement a tax on transit accommodation. Uh, so staff took this internally and discussed the best way to proceed, as it, as it is a discussion, how to move forward and, and, uh, and ultimately, uh, we, um, thought it was best to consult with the, uh, hospitality line, to move forward. Uh, to bring in all the voices to the table, to see how comfortable, um, the managers, owners would be with such a tax. So how to explain to them, because obviously the letter, it provided a very kind of government-led, um, verbiage, and so, you know, just to clarify, sometimes that they may have, uh, questions with, uh, with the President of the institution, he asked, with the, and where the city sat on it. So upon receiving it, we thought it was best to consult with, um, all the managers they could be involved with. And so going through that consultation, that KHA, several occasions, and Josh for free, uh, supplement now in terms of details that we discussed and how we would, uh, uh.
Yeah, so, so basically what we did, we did involve the KHA, and, and basically this accommodation tax will place the destination area, and it's currently charged by KHA, so KHA actually does charge a dollar fifty per room currently. Um, so what will happen is, um, with the accommodation tax, the recommendations that, uh, the city council, nine to twelve percent tax, KHA will still recover the amount, GMF, that they collected as a third party. And then all excess revenues, uh, above and beyond that dollar fifty, so I believe it was a hundred and forty thousand dollars KHA collected last year, so the, the city will be responsible for allocating a hundred and forty thousand dollars from that accommodation tax to KHA. And then anything above and beyond can be used for what the city needs, um, that they want to do for. The recommendations that it would be used for economic tourism, um, purposes, um, and charge products, you would, um, economic tourism. Um, it is a bit serious, and, and staff help, and should be used to supplement the industry experience and, and triangle, or, um, going forward. Uh, we did do some research, I'm going to be making myself, and, and, uh, one of the best practices, currently a five percent tax is being charged in that total. Um, and then basically, often, probably, it's, probably, these around our regions, that areas, in St. Paul, um, are all very, perhaps, at one percent rate. Um, Toronto, um, and, um, so, and, all, all of them are at four percent tax, so, uh, the recommendation was, we, we counted around some percentages, but, uh, if everyone's through four percent across, and we're, we're less than the industry average, and stick with the four percent. So the recommendation is definitely by September first, um, and, uh, we've been working with Charlotte, um, and, uh, finance, and there shouldn't be any issues with implementing a tax at this time, so.
Councilor McMillan, then Councilor Goss.
You go ahead, I'll call. Um, the KHA payback, they have a hundred and forty thousand dollars.
Yes, so.
How, how many years does that run in effect?
It's, it's indefinitely, uh.
So, so going forward, so they're going to have a hundred and forty thousand dollars?
It's a rolling average.
A rolling average, so that is something that would really cause us to sit down with KHA and have a plan with them, for, for when, going, for when to see increased money, I think I'd really, having been in tourism for, for enough years, I would really like to see a more cohesive approach to what we're going to do with this, and that might mean having a couple of counselors, or somebody from the Development Commission, or whatever, with a few of the, of the, uh, DHM members, and we can develop a plan going forward, five years, ten years, fifteen years. And I think that at least would, because they can spend their money as they see fit, it would really be, we said, we all, we all do together, we work fairly well with, with, uh, us putting some money in, KHA putting some money in, Biz putting some money in, we have partnerships, and we can, for. The second part is that money is for economic development, and McSweeney's report very strongly pointed out to us that we're mostly underfunding our, our development part. So I would really like to see all of that money go into sort of a walk down specific program for at least a few years, where KH, or pardon me, where the Development Commission could develop a five-year plan, a ten-year plan, for how to spend that money. I really get a little bit leery when I saw that there were examples of money going into a recreation center, cleaning or something. I really don't see those in that strong way, in, in light of the fact that we're, we're so seriously underspending on economic development. And economic development and tourism, the theory of re-levaging us money, so two hundred thousand dollars, uh, a year or more, could really turn out to be enough a lot more leverage money, and finally, we can start to work underground development. As opposed to the, pretty, probably, twenty five thousand dollars, we've talked about it, adaptive ground, we're going to need to put some skin in it, and that means serious skin, I mean, it's not just little, you know, projects, so I'd like to see that money walk in. We definitely, this group, I mean, can't we just tap into it, because we suddenly, we, quite a lot of stuff will appear, and, uh, so.
Yeah, and just to respond to that, so, I mean, as Josh outlined, working with finance, that's the sole intent, is to create another line, essentially, where these funds can come in, to, uh, to be locked in, and essentially, I mean, via, we don't know the structure, uh, as you've outlined, as to us, so the structure of, who will be at the table designing that five-year plan, or whatever, capacity to determine that at this point. Uh, and I perceive that, and as staff, working with Development Commission and other agencies, counselors, how, whatever that structure would be, as kind of figuring out that five-year plan, as to where those funds will go, like specifically, um, allocated, which is in economic development, that's the sole.
Yeah, I guess, because we do have some, some serious issues, like I said, in our touch, not in ground development, but, of course, season, of course, season tourism, we saw some great plans for season tourism, there's intercourse in, I think, that we're not going to play with. This could give us a chance to do that. And I'm gonna be honest, I was probably one of the most excited people in town when I saw everybody in, but everyone was a little. And I went down, I took pictures of every day that it was going up, and my heart sank when I realized that there's no way, no way ever we could use that properly in one time. And we're now going to have to put another, half a million dollars in on that skin, I don't know what that's going to be. And with a, well, I will, I'm gonna call it a white elephant, because we only getting three hours, three years, three months of use per year permanently, I'm tiring it, I'm beating on it. So I get a little concerned about this, I just want to be sure that whatever we do is to fix some deficiencies, so I understand we've spoken about that, I just wanted to be sure that.
And then also, like, just the beauty of it is too, I mean, in terms of tourism, capital upgrade, we're actually have to bring that to the table, hanging on to the state of the asset. Right, so this will provide a nice saving that, the saving that are going to.
I'm, I'm, I'm glad, David, the first one.
Thanks. I've been saying for a few years, Karen, if you may remember that I visioned the uh planning economic develop, development departments would be the most important departments in the city. And McSweeney report confirmed that. But I also said when it came to planning and economic development, that that would mean diversifying our economy. And uh tourism, uh don't get me wrong, I'm, I'm all for tourism. But in planning and economic development, because there's so much of a tax burden on our residential tax base, that we have to do something with that. So we're missing opportunities, I believe, with application, uh because we don't have site ready, um we don't have any site ready land for development. And I think we have to start designating areas in our planning. In the official plan, where we deal with all of the potential uh future objections of doing that, we designate it as a future area for a certain type. Whatever the city has to start planning to provide new services, find a way to fund that. And uh what we, investors today, developers today, can't wait a year, two years to go through a whole bunch of uh red tape. They have money, it doesn't do any good, the bank brought to one and a half percent of their money. They want that money to reinvest as quickly as possible, so that's the direction we have to go in. Not going to be used for not only the branding, but I think it has to be planning as well as economic development, but it has to be also directed to diversifying our economy.
Counselor, sir?
Yeah, I'm glad to be able to make um, it happened with KHA, it was a supportive, that's great news. And um their contributions over the years are, so you know, when they asked us, can you do something, we should go and ask them. I am like, I'm so excited to see that they said that possibly some of that money should be used for the winning. Because they tend to the flexibility association has been a lot by that, so that's even a game, right, of all partnerships. I was excited about that, um absolutely, you said, you know, that now I know, you know, funded by government, I think it's great, it's great.
Can you do any extrapolation of the numbers, it should be easy to figure out from accommodation last year, what did you, how much, yeah, how much, how much?
How much excess? The excess is, they get four percent based on what they rented from last year, is around three hundred fifty thousand dollars.
When you're coming?
I, I would be, I was gonna say, I was gonna say probably four or five hundred thousand.
I mean, it, it, it all depends, so basically, because we're changing from a one point five, or what, dollar fifty, it was a static number, now four percent rate. So if your room rate goes to two hundred dollars, you pay four percent of the two hundred dollars, not four percent, not one, a dollar fifty for two hundred. So that percent increases, we average it, they really only charge you a percent, um average, a percent on their combination before, so it's about a three percent increase.
And that was on the certain number of hotels.
Yeah, so.
And, and there was a buyer, there was an ability for other producer or other, let's say CPR, to get a break on it and not pay it.
Yeah.
It was technically, technically, if I saw that on my bill, I could say I choose not to pay that.
It was voluntary, yeah.
It was a baseball ticket.
Yeah, I, I look.
Considerably more teeth and, and breaking if you wanted to.
It does include, um this will be on all fixed accommodations and, and one of the, the aspects of KHA really talks about, but yeah, this is a lot of the Airbnb, VRBO accommodations that are coming into our community. Um so the recommendation, as you guys see in here, is that we will be approaching Airbnb, VRBO to charge the four percent on those accommodations while properly planning, um figure out the bylaws around VRBOs and everything. So you'll see.
The other thing I noticed in the KHA comments, and I thought they were all fair about getting the tickets and, but they didn't want to keep the money in cash and reserve. I think we're gonna have a hard time, I think with their comments, but they didn't want to keep that money in reserve.
So they, they didn't have an understanding of what we meant when we had, so we talked about reserves with them numerous times. And when we, we, when we talked about reserves, we said reserve on the fact that that money would be put into reserve, so it was uh only for economic dominant tourism and not for the general coffee.
Oh, so that's what they said?
Yeah, and that's, and, and when I did talk to her, she said she, they didn't understand that portion, so, yeah.
We've talked about it for quite a few years now, about self sustainability, economic, whatever, this tool was amazing, because I mean, I still show it half my time.
Well, it all depends on we, ideally, more people trapped here, but more money.
And it's four percent, so.
You have times when them rooms are going at three hundred bucks a night in car, which is unusual, but it's happened quite a bit because there are no rooms.
Yeah.
And uh obviously the, I was gonna take advantage of it, including Airbnb, Airbnb's gonna be a couple of them, but uh lots of them, you can distract them. And uh but no, I think, I think this is great to, so I, I thought it was my best. And if you uh do decide that they need to do a survey in the paper, I can guarantee you that eighty percent are going to be opposed to it. And I didn't, I, I didn't realize that current people um stay in hotel rooms in cars. But the last time it was done, I think it was eighty seven percent opposed to it, and I figured, wow, I didn't know that many of us stayed in hotels.
We're responsible.
Fair enough.
I think the biggest message coming across when we do this is that our neighbors, two hours away.
Everybody's doing it.
Yeah, I think everyone's doing it, right, so it's, it's, it's not something that's special.
Great, good.
Okay, we have the zoning bylaws coming up. And talk, okay, um any other thing you said, any other thing, any, anything else counsel would bring up, Counselor Russo?
Uh just one thing, I, I was invited to participate on a panel on the Ontario Association of Chief Police in Huntsville. Uh dealing with bill one seventy five and uh safe and wellbeing communities. So I was interested, but uh I was told I got a budget, I can use it wherever I, I want, but I think that uh that type of thing should be approved by council.
Well, it should also go to the police services board.
Yeah, I know where it belongs. I was asked why, knowing from the board, uh would not ask, I don't know, they asked me and uh they know I've had an interest in that, I would make some comments, and they invited me, so.
Yeah, there, there will be, um and, and AMO also has tasks for us on them, um although I've been on a couple of them so far, I thought we'd take that to the police services board. And we'll actually be, we'll, we'll actually be doing that, we'll be down at the OAPSB and the NMA, and there'll be workshops and discussion on that, so. Counselor Woskis?
Is that what you were asking?
Yeah, I, I think that's, you know, we're gonna attend a panel and various other things, uh they invited me through the city of Canora. And uh so.
Are they paying the costs?
Well, that's why I'm asking, because I'm not paying. I'm not paying my own costs again.
No, no, I, I wondered if they were.
There's also one that they want, that the safe, safer cities, uh through the Canadian Municipal Network of Crime Protection. They also want, uh, I don't know where we are in membership, five hundred bucks, and they, there's funding available for one, possibly two. All expenses paid to this conference except for travel. So that is coming up, I, I don't really have a date for that yet. I think that what's going on right now in um joint several liability and asset management, municipal data works for minimum standards and a whole bunch of stuff. And first responder, I think we should have a look at that and stay on top of that, because a lot of that will be mandated in twenty nineteen, twenty twenty.
There's uh, like, a lot of the stuff we're already into, and so I don't want the duplication, and again, your budgets, and I've mentioned this to council before. Um we've been pretty lenient, because some people haven't used much, but um budgets on council is gonna be kind of a topic of discussion. And um if there, like, a lot of these um committees, like AMO, um you're asked to sit on salt, everything's covered obviously by AMO. And like you said, I've sat on a lot of them, and that's why it's so important, long to know them in AMO, is because you have that opportunity to, to show up and it's funded from the general funds that, that AMO brings in, so. Like, we have to take a, a little, a little better look at it, if that's, if we're already covering this off at the OAPSB and um some of them committees there, then there's no reason to duplicate it.
Counselor Woskis? Counselor McMillan?
Uh just, just acknowledgement of the passing of uh a great man, an elder, Clifford Stee, uh last February first, I believe. Was, I mean, in my mind, it's a loss to the community, he was a kind and gentle person, that was very inclusive. Her wood event, her wood teachings he was sharing, so uh it was very touching.
And uh it's my intent to, in council meeting to do, I did want to do two of them today and then.
That's right, I understand, yeah.
Hard enough to get to the first one?
Yeah, I understand.
Sure?
Um I was lucky enough to be one of the presenters at the Contra Brons speech, going um this past Saturday, and the work that goes into it from the museum and that committee that, that they have there. I just want to compliment, uh we figured, what are the stories um that people tell of our community? Mrs. Richardson, off the lake, she's a ninety three year old woman, and she did her story in two parts. And she talked about being allowed, immigrating to Canada during the war years, and of course, she was all involved overseas, and that, and her story was just mesmerizing. And um I always encourage people to go up to the history of storytelling, I know I don't make it every year, so I'm not gonna think that it would be a good one. But you're always looking for speakers, and they're always looking for stories. So I just want to put it out there, unless we keep getting people in the community to step up, um they're having a hard time. So it's just to, to keep that in the back of your mind and, and put it out there, um some of the stories that, that people tell. I mean, Dave and I found a connection just in the story that I did, that I didn't know, and even had a, had a conversation about it. It is our common ground to tell our stories in our community, so just keep thinking about that, because we've all got stories in our family to tell. And I know that the, the museum wants to keep doing this, but unless they can, we're coming forward, telling the stories in our community. Yeah, the place was packed, they had to move to Seven Gents this year because you can't accommodate anymore, and it was absolutely packed. And the people just, the same people just keep coming out, because these stories are just so, so great. So I just put that out there, so people will think about, you know, encouraging people to come and tell the stories about the history of our community.
That's a great way of documenting history, because there's somebody, when I did the one there, I was in voice three or four years ago, and I was, I was at that quick page, twenty bucks ago, and listened to some idiot stand up there and talk about his family or whatever, and I, like, I was mesmerized. Because listening to the other ones, it was, wow, like, this is great stuff. And it's, you know, talking to um about that and, and about that and, and the connection with your family and talking about uh him losing his leg a person in uh in nineteen forty, forty, forty one. And start talking about stuff, and he starts telling me about the horse fire that turned out where we are, that was all destroyed by horse fire, right from where you lived, him all the way through, he kind of that, they're going back and they're, they're back and they're cutting that. And there were kids there with that fur, and um it's amazing, like, the stuff, so get that recorded, great job by the.
Absolutely.
Okay, um now, speaking of traveling conferences, and you don't have to travel very far, you gotta drive a couple of blocks, uh NOMA, who is going to NOMA? Please, we're good. Oh, okay, okay. Okay, okay, are they registered? Oh, oh, good, because we're filling up, we're, we're gonna be overfull, we're gonna have to shut the registration.
What's the timeline of the Winchley event?
Okay, I've, I've traveled back to timeline today. Okay, still trying to, um, yeah, and some effective things, we might have three party leaderships.
I'm guessing hearing test the day before, so I'll be right on top of it.
We were worried about your hearing.
There are a lot of people worried about my hearing. Okay, um. Getting some, but I'll remember it, I think, um, okay, a motion to uh close, adjourn to a closed meeting?
I think I've got that, Dave.
And Counselor Woskis, you'll run your first closed meeting as deputy mayor.
Are we gonna be men before women?
Yeah.
Oh, no.
Well, we'll just adjourn.
Okay, so I do the closed motion one? Move by myself, seconded by Counselor Russo in pursuit to section two thirty nine, three point one, where the municipal act two thousand and one is amended. Committee will move into a closed session at eleven thirty, eleven forty three AM. For the purpose of educating, training members pertaining to Canora District Services Board activities and further that at this meeting, no member will discuss or otherwise deal with any matter in a way that materially advances the business or decision making of council.